All right, good morning. Welcome to the Rankin County Board of Supervisors Planning Session Meeting on March 29th, 2018. We'll call the Planning Commission Meeting to order. And Mr. Slade, do you mind leading us in the invocation to get things started?
Thank you for the opportunity again that we have for the rescue first. Lord, thank you for your presence here with us today. I pray by virtue of just giving us the wisdom of discernment that we need today. Help us, Lord, to say and do things that are pleasing to you. Help us to think more highly of others than we do of ourselves. Father, I just thank you that you've given these men the abilities that you've given them and that they have been willing to use them in service to the community. Father, for those that are helping to protect us today, keeping us safe in times of bad weather, Lord, I just, I thank you for them and for their willingness to sacrifice, for their families, Lord. I pray that you protect them to keep them safe in Christ's name. Amen.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Slade. As we work through the agenda on the Planning Commission, item number two, consideration and approval of the February minutes, does the board wish to entertain a motion for that?
So I move.
A motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. Item two passes. Item three, old business. Ms. Lawrence, good morning.
Hi, good morning. Would y'all like to review either of those hearings that are scheduled for Monday?
I'm good.
We haven't received calls on either of those.
Okay. Looks like everybody's good on that then. So item three will be closed. Item four, new considerations, Ms. Lawrence?
Okay.
Went pretty quick on you, didn't it?
The first item is a conditional use permit for William Pittman at 1044A Seventh Day Road. Mr. Pittman is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a short-term boarding and daycare for small dogs in an existing building. That property is located on the south side of Florence, I mean, on Seventh Day Road. It's a 10-acre parcel that's zoned agricultural A2. That's an aerial view of the property. Mr. Pittman's home is also located on this 10-acre parcel. This is his site plan. The existing building is shown here. He shows seven outside runs for the dogs, and he says that they'll go out three to four times a day for approximately 15 minutes. This is a view of that existing building on the property. He says there'll be a maximum number of 25 dogs. This is the entrance to his home. And then these are surrounding properties that we estimate are not closer than a quarter of a mile to his, to his location. Mr. Pittman is here if you have any questions for him.
I don't think, I don't have any. I'm familiar with the property, with the layout, the neighbors around there, and you're right, it's nothing really close. So I make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Morrison, set to public hearing. Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. So item A passes. Item B, Ms. Lawrence?
Next is a rezoning request by Freddie Rowell on Antioch Shallow Road. This property is located on the west side of Antioch Shallow. There are four parcels, approximately 112 acres total. He's asking to rezone from A2 to RE1 residential estate. It's currently being used as timberland. He's seeking the zoning change for development of possible large tract residential lots. You can't develop minor or major subdivisions in the agricultural zone. This is a view of that property. And then these are surrounding properties.
I make a motion to set the public hearing.
So a motion by Mr. Morrow, set to public hearing. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. So item B passes. Item C, Ms. Lawrence?
Okay, is a conditional use permit for Smokin Patty at 1451 Highway 469 South. They're seeking the conditional use permit to operate a hamburger stand in a portable building on this property. It's located on the southeast corner of Highway 469 and Henry Bird Road. It's a .43-acre parcel that's zoned agricultural A1. There's a convenience store on the property, Bridges Quickie, and the portable building is located next to the convenience store. They're proposing hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is a view of that portable building. This is the convenience store. And then these are surrounding properties. They have been approved for a food service permit from the State Department of Health. And I think Luke Sims is here today if you have any questions.
I don't, I don't have any questions. Just, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrison, to set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. So item C passes. Item D, Ms. Lawrence?
All right, the last item is a conditional use permit for Reginal Tims at 143 Tims Circle. This property is located at the very end of Tims Circle. Tims is a private drive off of Highway 49. This property is in an estate. It's a 34-acre parcel that's zoned RE1A. There are six other dwellings on this property, but the home that's going to be replaced is shown in the yellow circle at the bottom. They're seeking, I don't know if I said that, they're seeking the conditional use permit to replace an existing home with a 2018 32-by-80 mobile home on this property. This is a view of the one that will be replaced. This is the pad where it's going to go in behind the existing home. And then these are other homes on that property.
All this, everything in there is family. It's kind of like their own little settlement. The boat goes in, most of the circle comes out. Every place in there is a family. So I make a motion, sets the public hearing. I see there being no issue with it.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrison, set to public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. Item D passes. I think that closes out item four, Ms. Lawrence. Move into, anything on site plan or architectural review?
No, sir.
All good there? So item six on nuisance properties. Mr. Slade, good morning.
First item on the nuisance properties is Plus Wells Nuisance Property, 2412 South Pearson Road, District 1.
Can't you just combine those two?
Jared, it's two separate addresses, so we better take them.
Yeah, they're next door to one another, okay.
So we'll open the Plus Wells Nuisance Property Consideration, 2412 South Pearson Road, District 1. Ms. Renee, if that, that hearing is open, Ms. Renee will demonstrate for us, please.
All right, this property has come before you several times before. We've continued to receive complaints about the condition of the property, inoperable vehicles, rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken February 22nd. We sent certified mail. It was received, but we've had no response. These were the new pictures that were taken on Monday of this week.
What's the garage look like? Can't see it, can you?
Dwayne, did you see it?
It was, it was very cluttered earlier.
Still, still same.
Okay. This, this is continual, this is the third time, I think, I think the third time we've this, and I tell you, the homeowners and people passing, whatever, they're actually next door. You got that one, and what up on the hill's going to be next one, you're going to bring them next. They, you know, I, it's a never-ending situation. So I guess my question, I'm going to declare it a nuisance, obviously, but I really wish it's something we could do other than just start this same trail over and over and over because that's kind of where we, what's happening. And it's just, you know, I don't think they take anything serious because we start this again, you know, six months, a year later, we do it again. So I guess my question is, what can we do to address this? You know, this would be a little different if it was back out in the middle of nowhere. This is on main road. I'm telling you, people from Richland, it's, emails and a constant complaint. And when you see the next one, you'll see, very valid.
Jared, the unfortunate reality is, we're doing everything we can under our regulations. When we push it up to Justice Court, we ask for our Justice Court judges to levy, put parathor, use parathor to levy fines, to threaten additional, at least misdemeanor offenses, that they have the ability to put them in jail. I, I think the question is, proper question, absolutely the proper question, but it's got to be put to the Justice Court judge, what can you do? And why the continual nature of the offense, what can you do to help get the attention of the law?
Yeah, this is what I pass on to the constituents and pass on to ones that complain. And, you know, it, it sounds like we're just passing above, however, you know, they understand, but their, their question is this, that. We got a great system here. Why does it just, it's kind of like a, a Peter Fender just keeps coming back on the street.
So, the thought that I have, maybe Renee and I can talk about this, assuming that you want to move forward with the declaration that's supposed to push it up to Justice, what we probably will try this time, and this is the thought that comes to my mind off the top of my head, would be that when we know that particular court hearing date, we will try our best to give word to the community that today is the day that you need to show up in Justice Court, and you need to be available or there so that it's clear to the judge that the community is serious about something they've done.
Because honestly, and I say this over and every time, I see it, I know it's there, we don't go out looking for it. We wait till someone complains and, and it, you know, I get, hey, the Wells property's starting to get messy again. Hey, the Wells property, you know, here it comes again. What can you, what can we do to stop this? And you see the next one, it's going even worse. But anyway, I declare, I want to declare it a nuisance, moving on now.
All right, so a motion by Mr., you want to close the public hearing? Are you good?
We will close the public hearing.
I think we got one.
Take action.
Okay, so got a motion by Mr. Morrison to declare it a nuisance?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. So item A's been declared. So item B, Mr. Slade?
Item A will be, the, we'll open the public hearing on the Kenneth Wells Nuisance Property, 2418 South Pearson Road, District 1. That hearing is open. Ms. Renee will demonstrate for us.
Okay, this property has been before you also several times. We've received complaints about the condition of the property.
Yeah, just hold tight, we'll get you.
We're going to let your chance come up.
Rubbish and debris. The old house is dilapidated and falling down and needs to be torn down. These pictures were taken on the 22nd of February.
This is probably worse than it's ever, ever been, honestly, and no one, this house is, no one is living in this house, if I'm correct. And, yeah, actually, the whole thing needs to be cleaned up and completely cleaned up. I think that might would help the situation. We got, I believe we have one or two.
These are the new pictures. There hasn't been any change. The certified mail was received, but we've not had a response.
Ms. Wells, if you will, can you come forward, can you explain to the board what's going on with this, with this property? Do I assume correctly that there's no one else here to speak on this matter? Well?
All right, Mr. Wells, if you would, introduce yourself to the board, please. Just your name and your address.
Okay, now, what is, 2418 South Pearson Road. I have problems, and I have been working on it to, uh, get it clean. I had to call the light people to, uh, to, uh...
Disconnect.
Connect or disconnect?
Yeah, di, 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 disconnect. And, uh, I'm going to do it.
Well, this actually, honestly, is worse than it's ever been. And, and this is just trash. It's in, before, you had car rims and car tires, own rims, and et cetera, et cetera, but this is nothing but trash.
It, it looked like just trash, but it's actually, uh, uh, scrap.
Scrap? You got scrap in those bags?
Uh, cans. And, uh, cans, I had another truck, and, uh, my son had to use it. I, I, I took the cans off the truck.
Okay.
And got the truck running.
Okay.
For my son, and that, 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 that is came from.
Okay, well, I tell you what we're going to do. We, we've heard this before, and you got to understand, man, this is, anyway, we've heard all this before, so we're declaring nuisance. And so you've got, you're going to have a limited time between now and the time a court dates set to have this spotless and, and the house gone to, house going to be torn down, the whole works. I mean, this place, this has got to be cleared up. It's not like you're living back in some 40 acres and nobody can see it. This is on the main road. I mean, your own neighbors are complaining. The people living all around you complaining. Not only does this create a problem just for sight, is, is snakes, mosquitoes, rodents, everything. I mean, this is just unhealthy for the community. And, so anyway, like I said, we've been down this road, I know, the third time, and not one time does it ever get completely cleaned up. And now it's worse than I've ever seen it before. So anyway, I, I move to declare this nuisance.
Second.
All right, Mr. Slade?
Yes, sir.
You want to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing on that. You've got a motion to declare it, I think, a second, so.
All right, so a motion...
We'll move that one up to Justice Court as well.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. So item B passes. Item C?
Item C is the continuation of the Steve Loper nuisance property at 319 Allison Place, District 2. We'll open that public hearing. I'll check, is there anyone here to speak on Steve Loper nuisance matter? Anyone? Okay. Renee's going to demonstrate for us.
These were pictures that were taken after he had done a good bit of cleanup. He was asked, or either he suggested, he would put up a privacy fence between he and his neighbor, and that's, he has started the fence. It's not quite finished yet, but he has got it going in the right direction.
Okay.
So that was just a continuation.
All right. So, Mr. Slade, do you want to do any action, just to let that go for now, and then we need to come back to this at some point? We'll just declare it another nuisance at another point?
Let me ask a clarifying question. Do we, we expect him to make further improvements?
We'll continue to monitor it, make sure he finishes it.
Y'all are continuing to... Mr. President, if you're, if you're okay with simply closing the public hearing, in light of the progress that's been made, we anticipate that that will continue and the department will continue to monitor it. My, my thought process would be just to close the public hearing. If we have to take further action, we'll restart the process.
Do you need any kind of action from the board, or just close it?
I'm just going to announce that, that it's closed and that it's going to be handled internally from this point.
Okay, let's do that. Nothing else on nuisance, nuisance properties. So item seven, Ms. Lawrence, discussion of proposed changes to building permit fees and zoning applications. Were you going to...
Right. I've given y'all some handouts, some comparisons of other jurisdictions' fees. Basically, we haven't adjusted our fees since 2012, and this is just a proposal to bring us into line with the average permit fee of other jurisdictions. So I gave y'all some examples based on a 2,000-square-foot home about the pricing. And what we want to do is increase the valuation, the, from $85 a square foot to 100 a square foot for the living area. It would be a $15 increase in the, per square foot in the, in the valuation. So based on a 2,000-square-foot home right now, we would charge a permit fee of $670. If we went up to the $100 a square foot, it would increase to 760. That would be a permit fee increase of $90.
Can, can you just give us, and I know we're not going to be totally inclusive, what they get for that? What, I mean, when you pay that money, there's things that your office does that, what is, what all, what's the bigger things?
We review their plans when they come in. There's a plan review that we do for that fee, and also then they get seven inspections now.
Wow.
Yes, sir. Because we're starting to look at the pads, we're not allowing any dirt work to be done now until we go out and, and look at the site and make sure there's not any stormwater issues or things that need to be addressed on the front end.
All right, if, if one of those inspections fail, and one of your inspectors has to go back out, do you charge additional, or is that in that fee?
We have it on our fee schedule that there is a $50 reinspection fee. However, we don't do it the first time. If we go several times, two times, and they're not making any attempt to do anything?
Right.
Then the third time, we do charge that $50 reinspection fee. That's something that we've recently started implementing, even though it's been on our fee schedule for many years.
Anything else, comments wise, Paul?
Are we, are we trying, we...
The changes are shown in red, and there's also a commercial plan review fee of 5 cents per square foot. We've never charged a commercial plan review fee, but it does take quite a good bit of time, and so that was something I wanted y'all to consider. Based on a 2,000-square-foot commercial building, it would, the cost would be $100.
That, that's not, plus the other 760, that's just $100?
Well, that's just to review the plans, commercial plan review fee. They'd still get a building permit and pay the fee.
I understand.
Yeah.
Is this something we need, we, we make them proven today, or this more or less implemented?
Just a discussion to see your thought, try to get your thoughts on it and see.
We need to approve it. I don't have a problem with the fees, and they, puts us up a better lie with other municipalities around town, so I don't have...
That's right. And there is a comparison back here that shows you their fees.
Yeah, that's what I'm finding.
And the average permit fee, if you took the averages, $849, and we're, ours would be 760, you know, for that 2,000-square-foot home. That would be the difference. So we still wouldn't be, you know...
So, Ms. Lawrence, you're good on putting that on the agenda for Monday?
Yes, sir. Now, also, there are two others on there, listed on there, just to make sure y'all are aware.
Okay.
Establish a work order, a stop work order fee of $100. That's something that, you know, the new building official, Jerry Bowns, wanted us to do. And then also, I had included to increase the zoning application fee from 200 to 250.
Where's that?
Mr. Morrow, is that where, don't mention where you are.
I don't hear where it says $100.
It's on that first page where it says...
Well, the work order, stop work order fee, I've, why would you charge $100 just to stop for stop work order?
Well, I think Mr. Bowns thinks that that would get their attention. It would be $100 to take the sign down, and hopefully, you know, they wouldn't continue to...
The only problem with that, the only problem I have, and I was going to bring this up, is the only questions that have been brought to me is simply some inconsistency with some of the inspections. And when I say that, you have two, made two different people come out. One comes out, and he's good with everything, or gives you a list of what to do, and do that. Another one comes out, and he fails it for something that the first one didn't pick up, or either he, he didn't like the way the, what the first guy had. So if you start this $100 deal, that's where I had to kind of pick up there. I mean, this could be, it could kind of...
Well, we wouldn't put up a stop work order that. If they got a discrepancy list, they would have an opportunity to make the corrections. But we have talked about what you're talking about, a different inspector following back behind somebody else. Unless it's a life safety issue, we're not going to...
Yeah, that, that's what I think is a complaint, is that. One comes in, inspects a fine, other one comes in and goes, oh, no, I don't, I don't like this. So it needs to be something, so...
Yeah, we, we've talked about that, so...
All right, anything else, comments wise?
I'm good.
No, I'm going to look over this some more, though.
All right, we'll put it on the agenda, Mr. Dandy, for Monday. Okay.
Make a motion adjourned until May 3rd?
May 3rd. So a motion on the floor by Mr. Morrow to adjourn to May 3rd, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. So that'll close up the Planning Commission meeting, and we'll call to order the meeting of Rankin County Board of Supervisors, and we'll start with public comments. And just a little bit of deviation that's on the schedule right here. I'd like to start with Mike Word, if we could, just a second on a storm review of last night's damage on anything. Mike, another one of these impromptu deals for you. Be gentle with us.
All right.
Good morning.
Well, good morning. I sent you guys an email yesterday afternoon with the latest update. The National Weather Service obviously changed their forecast about four or five different times throughout the day. And last night, right before everything was hitting, myself and our staff were out. We posted up around the county just to get eyes on everything. Mike Harrison was out as well. Basically, at the end of the day, what we had was some really, really heavy rainfall, very minimal localized flooding. We did have a little less than 10 properties at the manship off of Hugh Ward that were damaged. So getting pictures in on that now. We're talking about fences that are down, some little storage buildings behind the houses that were knocked down, and shingles. Some of the shingles were all the way down to, to the decking. We have sent a DR1 to MEMA on that. It is already submitted to them. We have not requested any resources at all from the state, just due to the, the small amount that we have as far as damage. Right now, where we speak, I just got a text a few minutes ago from Brian, he's watching the radar. We've got a pretty good break, about another 50 or 60-mile break, and then it is coming. We're going to have some pretty heavy rainfall for the remainder of the day. So obviously, the ground is saturated. We may, may encounter some, some localized flooding again in our normal flood-prone locations across the county. We had a few trees down this morning. Mike Harrison and his crew were on that pretty quickly, so got everything cleaned up, and we're good to go from there, so.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, bye.
All right, so item A on our agenda, through Extension Services, Doug Carter, his group, are they here? Yeah, there he is, right there.
Oops, watch out for that table.
Sure do like that sweatshirt you got on, Doug.
Thank you.
How are you doing this morning?
Doing good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank y'all for letting us come before you today. Oh, I need to introduce Ms. Natasha Haynes, she's our FNC agent, Ms. Donna Bealich, she's our Extension Horticulturists, and Ms. Heather Jennings is on Medical League. She won't be here today.
Natasha, Donna.
Okay. Oh, we appreciate y'all letting us come before you. We were going to thank you for supporting us. Y'all have been more than generous to the Extension Service, and, oh, we just are here today to, to thank you. So Donna, would you like to come up and Natasha, and tell them a little bit about what you did?
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so I've been with the Extension Service for 25 years, not looking at retiring anytime soon. I wish that was true, but everybody's always concerned about insurance. How are you going to pay for insurance afterwards? But concerns or activities for this past year, if you were to look at the horticulture, of course, you'll see that with plants, everybody's always concerned whenever there's an issue with them, either having some type of disease, or insect, or cultural problem. This year, with the 19-degree temperatures and ice and snow that we had at least twice, we're seeing some cold damage, of course, with some plant material. We really won't know how bad it was on some plants until the summertime, and that's just because the vascular system would have split down towards the base of the plant, and you don't notice that until they go into moisture stress in the middle of the summer. And it's really hard for people to associate the cold damage that they had six months prior to the plant death that they would see in their landscape, you know, in July and August. The other things that are going on as far as plant-wise, two insect issues that we will start to see more and more of. One of them is the crepe myrtle bark scale, which will, I hate to say, our crepe myrtles will take a pretty good hit. They're not going to be as pretty. And the insect is one that they have not come up with some good insecticides that will work for a long term. In other words, it's just gonna be a maintenance problem as far as the sooty mold that you normally see, the black stuff that you see associated with anything that is feeding on a plant, and also lack of blooms, and, you know, in some of them that are very susceptible to this bark scale, we may see some deaths. So crepe myrtle may not be the best plant, if any of y'all are into landscaping this year. The other one is the emerald ash borer, that's gonna really affect more of the forest industry. That's coming in from the north, you know, they've seen it or spotted it in states surrounding us, so it's gotta be here too. And it basically loves ash trees, so those might not necessarily be the best plants to put in your landscape either, as far as shade trees, but really, it's gonna affect more of the forestry aspect of it than people realize at this point. As far as fruits and nuts, we did have a good cold snap this year, so if any of you are interested in peaches from Mr. Banks over on Highway eighty, he will be open this year. Last year, the, there wasn't enough cold to, I guess, give him the blooms and the production that would keep him in business last year. This year's not gonna be a problem. And as far as pecans, if the rain will stop, then maybe we can get some pollination going on, since it's wind pollinated. The other thing that Doug and I work with, or the, or the group that we work with, are the master gardeners. There are fifty plus in Rankin County, and they do numerous educational programs at the libraries. This year, with some of their funds that they gained from the plant sale, they helped Ms. Heather's four H livestock team go to Colorado, and they did help me with some financial support for attending a sustainable horticulture farm workshop in Utah. This year, we will have a master gardener training. It'll be a tri-county, Heinz, Madison, and Rankin individuals who are interested in going through that five-week program, forty hours of training. It'll be going on in August and through September. So if you know of anybody that's interested in that, just get in touch with me. The only other thing that I can think of is, what are we gonna do whenever we have all of this concert and traffic and ball field? We're looking forward to that, that's on market or, or close to it. We'll have to reschedule some of our activities so that there isn't, you know, that we're not, that our patrons are not worried about the, the traffic concerns and all of that. So it's just gonna change things, but it's gonna be interesting throughout the rest of the year.
Well, thank you for your comments on that. As, as far as the traffic goes, I know right now, we're in communications with the city of Brandon to figure out the best possible result or outcome we can get from those concerts. So there's still discussion going on, on the parking and the logistics of everything, so we hope not to impede. We hope not to impede too much in a lot of other places, so we're gonna try to get a good plan together for you. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning, okay, a few comments about failing consumer science. Food safety is a very important issue. Right now, there's a partnership with the Health Department that is targeted towards childcare providers, and that program is called Tummy Safe. So right now, over three hundred childcare providers in Rankin County have been trained in Tummy Safe, which is, of course, promoting healthy food, healthy nutrition. Another program is the financial management in the high schools. Brandon and Florence High School was target this past year. And lastly, of course, the Mississippi Homemaker Volunteers, which is one of our volunteer groups here in Rankin County, they're doing a lot in Pearl with the Pregnancy Crisis Center, so we thank y'all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Again, thank you, y'all have been real generous to us, and I'm real fortunate. I work with some of the best people in, in the business. These girls are as, as good as anybody in the state. Heather's good, she's got kids in, in all the time. As far as ag, we do a lot every year. We had a food plot management workshop, a wild turkey workshop, we, we had a nutrient management workshop. We had four cattle meetings, we've got a beef field aid plan, May fifth, at my parents' farm. We're gonna emphasize young farmers and teach them how to get started in the cattle business. We had four forestry meetings, had a timber tax workshop, and a pine beetle workshop. I'm one of Heather's shotgun coaches. We had six private applicator training, pesticide training was a, a big thing last year. I made a lot of farm visits and a lot of pond visits. Any questions?
Yeah, quick question, Doug.
Yes, sir.
I noticed a picture here of the county poultry show. I didn't know y'all had a poultry show.
We do, yes.
What do they do?
We just started that. That poultry show really was held in Simpson County. We do it in conjunction in, I think, three different counties. That's a, a growing thing. You have kids with not looks face it in their backyard, get chicken.
That's actually been going on a long time, but it's kinda died out, didn't it? I mean, I remember when I was a kid.
It was two thousand years ago, that's right.
Surely, I forgot about that, yeah.
Interesting.
We appreciate y'all's hard work.
Thank you, Doug, very much.
Thank you.
All right, item B under public comments, Sheree Adams, seven thirty-four. How are you, Ms. Adams?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
They always stick together, you know.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to y'all this morning. I also want to thank Mr. Gaines, Mr. Bass, and what was the other gentleman that came with you yesterday?
Mr. Harrison.
Mr. Who?
Mike, Mike Harrison, road manager.
Mr. Harris? Uh, they came out yesterday and tried to explain in detail a little bit more. This is the receipt, the document I received from Mr. Bass. I mean, I'm sure y'all have a copy of this, especially Mr. Gaines and everything, but I don't understand stations. I understand footage. And from what I was told yesterday, that it would be coming six and a half feet from the, the white line on the edge of my road. As you can see in the picture that I've given you, there's the five houses right here together, and across the street's vacant land. As Mr. Gaines explained to me yesterday, that there's an AT&amp;T box on the other side of the road, I'm gonna say on the north side of Holly Bush, and I'll say that our houses are on the south side of Holly Bush. But the AT&amp;T box is twenty-nine, twenty-seven feet from the road's edge. So Mr. Gaines also explained to me yesterday that twenty-plus years ago, this was a state aid road, and they don't own as much land on the north side of Holly Bush as they do on the south side of Holly Bush, because of whatever happened many years ago. But when I talked to Mr. Bass, he told me that they own thirty feet on the vacant side of Holly Bush right here. But the only problem is this AT&amp;T box. Like, most of the power companies, the water lines, they stay so many feet off the road. Was it thirty to forty feet, is that what's required by law? Where AT&amp;T, they don't, I guess they write their own rules. And they're not staying to thirty to forty feet off. Mr. Bass explained to me that AT&amp;T sort of brought their lines closer to the road than what they should, and it would cost a hundred thousand dollars to move these lines and delay the project nine months. I understand the project's gonna happen, I have no problem with it. I just have the problem of losing the, the part of my front yard. From the roof line of my house to the white line at the edge of the road is fifty-five feet, that's all I got. And if we come over six, six and a half feet, and then it's a two-foot shoulder is what's required by the Mississippi aid, that's what I read on their website, you know. This being a Mississippi aid road, we've still got to go by their guidelines because of past money and future money that you want to receive from the state, correct? So, I mean, so we're, we're still talking about eight, six and a half feet plus the two feet of shoulder, which is still gonna be eight and a half feet. And you take the eight and a half feet from the fifty-five feet that most of us have, some of us have more, some of us have less. It's like fifty-four to fifty-six is the most we have. We've already had to replace many mailboxes. Cars have come through our yard and hit cars in the others neighbors, in the others neighbors driveways in the past. So, I mean, I just, I really wish we could consider or find a way to not take the acreage from the property and take the acreage from the vacant lot. I also want to, I mean, do y'all have any questions for me? I mean, do you see where I'm coming from? I mean, I'm, I'm at the mercy of this board.
We do, and, and we appreciate you coming in with your comments and all, and I'm sure we'll take all of your advisement as we look through things, so.
And as a result of our meeting yesterday, my partner works for Puckett, which is, you know, a caterpillar dealer. He was called into his boss's office this morning and asked if there was a meeting at, on, on private residence yesterday, and he told him, yes, there was. And his boss asked him what happened, and he said, well, there was a discussion, and it got pretty heated, and I will say that, but there was no cursing, there was no threats, nobody touched nobody. But his boss asked him, did you make any threats to destroy or?
There, there's a pending sale of seven new pieces of equipment, and I'm sure I'm expendable to Puckett. And I will be contacting the Ethics Commission and giving names of the people at the, the meeting. I have a photo of people there.
All right, tell me, tell me who you are, sorry about that.
I'm Edman Jenkins, also live with the residence.
Okay, on, one of these residents right here?
That's right. I just want to make the board aware of that.
Make the board aware of what again?
That I will be contacting the Ethics Commission and giving names of the people, and the photo of me, of the people that attended.
They were, they were.
But the, the main concern is the traffic. It's a thirty-five or forty mile an hour road, being a county road. The supervisor yesterday explained that he didn't feel like speed bumps would be appropriate, that that may put the county at liability, sir.
We can't, we can't, we don't do speed bumps. We can't, no, I mean, that's just not anything the county can do.
And, you know, most people in the general public, when they see more asphalt, they think, well, I can go faster. They don't think I can go slower. It's a safety concern mainly. We don't want to be sitting in there watching TV one night, or a kid playing video games, and a car come from the front, to the front of the house. I asked, have they contacted the State Highway Department and asked for a longer turn signal at that intersection of Holly Bush and Twenty-five? They haven't contacted and asked for that. They can reprogram those signals to have longer turn signals at rush hour times, and, and in normal times, they'll switch back.
You said they, you said they, you asked, and they said you couldn't.
The people at the meeting, yourself and Mr.?
No, no, I, I told you that was an M dot light, and you said you knew, did call first.
I do, and I will call him this morning.
And you take care of it.
I will, I'll call him and ask. But that's, that's, that's a lot cheaper than.
Just be honest and tell what actually.
I'm being honest, that's a lot cheaper than a two million dollar project.
Don't slander.
That can be, that two million dollars can be spent somewhere else.
Tell them how you advise me what you do with that two million.
Sir?
Tell them what you said that you would do with that two million, and how stupid I was.
I didn't say anything about you being stupid.
Oh, you said I, that you said that's stupid.
Are you the one that called Puckett?
You can take, no, I don't know anybody at Puckett.
Okay, I just wondered.
All right, any, any, any other comments? You have any other comments?
It's just a safety concern, we're concerned about resale value of the homes.
Thank you.
And like I said, I, I feel like the, the changing of the turn signal would, would be an easier, more appropriate suggestion. The supervisor also said that they had several, several calls about, you know, the line of traffic, but none of the five houses that live there in it every day has ever called.
And we are the five closest houses on the, I mean, on the road there.
And then another option may be turn lanes only at the intersections of subdivisions, where the majority of the traffic would be turning in, which would also make the project.
At least two or three times in our conversation, mine and yours, on the phone and at your house, you said how much trouble it is for you to get out of your driveway.
Because of the people speeding coming by there at seventy-five and eighty miles an hour. That's with the amount of asphalt we have now. We add another twelve foot, what, how fast do you think they're gonna be going? There was a lady killed on Holly Bush last year with, with kids in the car.
And we have fatalities all across the place, I understand that.
Rick was at night, and it was two young girls, and there was not, that has nothing to do with what I'm talking about.
Most of the feedback that I've gotten from some of the people is mostly them trying to get off Holly Bush onto Twenty-five. And it bottlenecks back up to in front of Blackstone, in front of Reservoir East. And I can understand that, but, I mean, my thing is, is to, to put a turning lane all the way down for one point three miles, to me is, is an overkill of the whole road.
Look, we appreciate y'all coming in this morning, sharing your thoughts and comments, and we'll definitely take them under advisement.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, item C, we're gonna make one additional ad under public comments. They wrote down Shannon Dice down here, but let me just tell you, his name's not Shannon, it's Sean Dice. And luckily enough, we graduated high school together at Northwest Rankin. This is one of your top premier athletes out of Northwest Rankin, play basketball and everything else. So I'm not exactly sure what we're gonna talk about, but we could talk about basketball, or, or whatever we need to, but it sure is good to see you.
You know, you know, the truth is, I knew I would get a semblance of that when I came and stood up here. He embellished on the, on the talents and skills, by the way.
Good to see you, buddy. What do you got, what, what do you, what do you got for us this morning?
Like, as you said, my name is Shannon Dice. Thank you, President and, and Board for allowing me to speak today. My name is Shannon Dice, I'm with Mississippi Deferred Compensation. The state of Mississippi's voluntary supplemental deferred compensation plan is meant to supplement and working in conjunction with the state's pension plan. So I just wanted to come here, one, say thank the Board for allowing us to continue to serve county employees with deferred comp. That, that's number one. Second, I, I gave you guys this, this tool here, if you will, that I use and my team use when we are talking with, with folks who are potentially interested in our plan. It gives highlights of the plan. I also included an example of some of the communication material that we use when talking to folks who may be interested in the plan. And a third piece that I put in there is specific for, for your group, is a comparison of our plan or the state's plan with the National Association of Counties' plan. That's certainly intentional on, on my part, because I know the Association of Supervisors is really pushing that, that alternative to the, to the state plan. But some quick highlights, the plan itself operates very similar to a 401K for those who know what a 401K is. You can put money in on a pre-tax basis, up to eighteen thousand five hundred, for those folks that are under fifty. For people that are fifty or older, you can do an additional six thousand dollars. So twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars for folks that are fifty or older. All pre-tax goes into an account that you own, it does not benefit the state of Mississippi, nor does it benefit the county. I get that question from time to time. The plan itself offers about thirty or so different investment options. I can help, or, or a person like myself can help in the decision around that. That's where we kind of get the deer in the headlights, look, people know as much about this stuff than, than like I would. The plan also offers investment advice at no additional cost. It's really, really affordable, and that's one thing I want to emphasize in a public hearing like this. There's no cost at all from an administrative standpoint, the first year of participation. Again, the second year is only four dollars and twenty-five cents. I joke, I say, don't go to Starbucks one day in, in a month, and you pay the fee. So it's four bucks twenty-five cents, that's fifty-one dollars a year. A flat fee, people have a million bucks in deferred comp, pay fifty-one dollars, and folks have ten thousand, pay fifty-one dollars. That's how the state of Mississippi set, set it up. We've had very, very good participation with this county. I think Rankin County ranks third among all eighty-two counties that, that we serve, I should say eighty-one counties that, that we serve. If you're interested in the other two, Jackson and DeSoto, so you guys are number three. So I, I look forward to continued partnership. I worked with Mrs. Swills in the past, I'm sure I've worked with several of you in here. I've actually presented in this room in, in the summer of last year. So thank you for, for allowing us to continue to participate and serve county employees, and that's really the only reason I'm, I'm here. But for those of you who are interested in bridging the gap with insurance, like the beautiful lady who stood up here before me mentioned, I can help with that too, because a lot of people use deferred comp for that reason. And also to buy back service credits and stuff like that, for those who may have refunded their state retirement in the past and just got rehired from the state, so I can help you with stuff like that as well. My card is on the inside of that, you can call me. I have a few cards in the car for those who may be interested, I can go out and grab some cards. But let me know, and, and that's essentially it, so thank you for having me.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Sean, you see how good these Northwest Rankin alumni guys are, Bob? You see that? Bob's a Brandon guy, I got a Pisgah guy over here, I got a Florence guy over here. I gotta get what mileage I can get out of Sean, you understand?
Heck, that's me, Bob, believe me.
I know, see, he's, he's upset about it. Thank you very much. All right, so item four, moving on the agenda, I'm sorry, item six, moving on the agenda. Mr. Slay, item A, please.
First item under the, on the work session, or the work meeting, well, Bob's out, work session agenda is consideration of, now he's back, it's a work meeting now, a consideration of and potential action to adopt an amendment to our existing ordinance that provides for the regulation, storage, sale, and location of fireworks in unincorporated Rankin County. This proposal, which a couple of supervisors said, simply just put it as a talking point. What we, what we have found is that in our current regulation, we have prohibitions on locating, say, a firework stand, on locating closer in terms of linear feet to certain other uses. So the prohibition, for instance, would be that you can't be closer than a thousand feet from a church. Can't be closer than two thousand feet from a gas station. And so we wanted to look at that, that second, the, the fire hazard exclusion. We visited with the fire coordinator and made sure that he was comfortable with the idea that we would reduce that two thousand foot fire hazard limitation down to a quarter mile, which is thirteen hundred and twenty feet, linear feet. So that would be the proposal, that's the only change being requested, is that we move it from two thousand down to thirteen twenty, or a quarter mile.
Have we got any that's gonna directly affect, ma'am?
Oh, none that are. Uh, none that are currently in operation, Jerry. They're already, they already meet the requirement. So what this would do was, would be, potentially, it would allow for some that cannot operate now will be able to. That's kind of what we're looking at.
What do you mean, that they can't operate now, they'd be able to?
Because they're closer than two thousand feet from a prohibited use. But they're less than, or they're more than thirteen hundred and twenty feet away from the prohibited use. We're looking at, it's two thousand. Are we biting off too much there? It, and the fire coordinator believes that a quarter mile away from a hazard such as a hay barn or a, a silo.
I think that's plenty of apple.
Yeah. More, so, so the question was, it's two thousand feet. More regulation than we need for what we're trying to accomplish, which is the safety aspect. So if we get into, if we, if we set it at a quarter mile, we feel like we're still safe.
Well, what brought this up, that we had some incident?
It was unfair, I mean, an unbalanced deal where people have been grandfathered, and they were much shorter than that. I mean, if they were grandfathered, they eight hundred or five hundred or.
Or less, yeah.
Or less, and then, then it was, you know, kind of a dead time there, and there's some that got in, maybe a thousand or fifteen hundred. And then whenever people that started recognizing the regulations, you know, and like they're, they entered them the way they were written. It's two thousand feet. And it, just to bring everything, a quarter mile, uh, kind of.
But you got some in cities that are right next door to gathering.
Yeah, right, right.
And, and these won't really apply to that necessarily.
Right.
I mean, those are.
I was just making sure, I was just checking to see if we're gonna, like some guy that's got one that's been there for a long time, and he's eight hundred, officially shut him down.
No, sir, no, sir, that, that's still a grandfather, that's still a grandfather, Jerry.
That's why I didn't want to stir that up.
Now, let me hasten to add now, if that use goes away, there won't be a firework stand again at eight hundred feet away from a prohibited use. He's no longer grandfathered.
But he wouldn't have any, if we hadn't.
That's correct. If, if we never adjusted this ordinance, that'd be the same rule. He just had to find a way to get two thousand feet away. At this point, we're, we're suggesting that we change the regulation to allow for a quarter mile being the delimiter, okay? And it's easy enough to, to measure that. We may have to get, uh, a calculator for our fire coordinator, so he can add all that up correctly. But thirteen twenty linear, linear feet, we should be able to.
You have to shoot a missile to get that far. I, I haven't been advised any that had that velocity.
No.
That, that's the only thing, and I've got it as consideration and potential action.
At the best, yeah.
I've got it as consideration of and potential action. You can take action on it today if you'd like to. It's on the books to do it.
I'm trying to think in my head how it's going to affect somebody. I mean, you don't think, I'd really, I'd ask, I don't know whether this is something that already created a problem, that's what we're trying to correct it. And we're gonna.
Just the discrepancies, that's all.
I make a motion that we accept it.
Okay.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign. So item A passes.
How's it, wait a minute, how's it going to affect, uh, if you have an event somewhere and they, they want to do fireworks?
Well, we have a, we have a firework, uh, event.
They, they, they apply for.
Policy that's a permit.
It comes in, this is selling.
This, this ordinance will not affect that.
I know, I know, they were selling, but I just make, seeing how this was, okay.
This ordinance doesn't control that. That's through a permit process, and they have to, they have to be registered. They have to have a license to do it. They have to have insurance. The permit essentially puts it, those are, that, that's really a professional doing a display.
Right.
All right, item B, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir. This is consideration of and potential action to authorize an amendment to our lease agreement between Rankin County and Lantern Delivery Systems. These are our guys that are moving into the, that have already started moving into the Wreck-It Benkaiser building. This is basically cleanup work. We, uh, as you recall, back in November, we, uh, we authorized an assignment of the Wreck-It Benkaiser lease to Lantern Delivery Systems, and we worked out an arrangement with them where they will eventually take fee title to the property. They have to pay us for that. So this is the second stage in the process. We told you back then that there was more work to be done. We got the deal in place, and everything was locked down. And now we're cleaning up the rest of the deal, which is to allow for an amendment to the lease that triggers a, that provides for a purchase option on the exact terms that they agreed to. And so I've got the amendment to the lease that I've already reviewed. What I'm asking you to do today is to simply authorize the amendment of the lease to allow for the purchase option, and then I'm going to look through the, and study up over the weekend, the actual amendment language, and satisfy myself that it is what we agree to, and then I'll report back to you on Monday. You can make your approval of the amendment contingent upon me being satisfied with the language.
So, man.
So a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Right.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like signs. So item B passes.
Yes, sir. May I indulge, please, with an adding of an item C?
Sure.
It's, it's a matter that I failed to get on to the agenda. It's my, it's my deal.
Sure.
Um, I've got Kyle Williams from Brunette here with us today to help us walk through the, uh, an analysis. Uh, I've got a memorandum that I, um, am going to have copied and made available to you guys that helps us with our issue of how are we going to protect our roads with respect to heavy hauling activities. And Kyle has done a significant amount of work on our behalf to, to look at what other counties around the state are doing to protect their roads, and how we might be able to utilize, without reinventing the wheel, some of the methodologies that they're using.
Kyle, you mind hobbling up here for us?
Craig, do we need a motion to add that to the agenda?
Yes, sir, if you will.
Okay, so.
And this, this is just discussion.
This is for discussion.
This is just discussion.
I just know if you need to be added to the agenda to have the discussion.
It's up to you guys, if you, if you choose to have it on there.
Just straight discussion.
Kind of jumped me there when you said. We're, we're not ready for a decision.
Yeah, there's no action taken. This is just straight discussion.
We're not ready for a decision.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Kyle.
Do we need, do we need to add that to the agenda to have him speak?
If you will, I think this is a matter of, of justice.
Policy, okay. All right, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
So, man.
All right, motion by Mr. Morrow, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like signs. Good morning, Kyle.
Hey, how are y'all? Thanks for having me this morning.
What happened to your leg?
The, the practice of law is a dangerous endeavor.
I understand, I understand.
Don't tell the truth.
I understand. Makes something good.
It's a, it's a terrible story.
I'm scared, I'm scared Slay's going to come in and say he got hurt doing something.
He tried to enforce this heavy hauling ordinance to some other county.
And somebody broke his leg? Somebody broke his leg?
He went, he apparently went to a meeting on Hollybush yesterday.
I guess.
Um, thanks for having me. Trey wanted me to let you all know that he had a conflict and just, just couldn't get out of it, so he wishes he would be here. Um, as Craig said, we've looked at this, uh, for a few weeks now and tried to look at what other counties are doing, uh, have been doing. We've made contact with several, uh, board attorneys and, and some road managers with probably about thirty-five counties in the state. And we've been able to get about six or seven different ordinances from those counties. Several, several of those counties did not have ordinances, but what we've learned from looking at these ordinances is that while counties do everything a little different, there are some, uh, general principles that all these ordinances do have. You know, certainly you have the, the authority to regulate your, your roads and to set the weights as you see fit. Uh, there is one statute that allows permitting, uh, for weights that exceed the, the weight that you set for county roads. Um, and, and so looking at the other, we've looked at, um, Adams, Clay, DeSoto, Lee, Madison, uh, and Emmett Counties. We, we have, we have copies of their ordinances, and as I said, they're all a little different. Some are two pages, some are, are twelve pages. But, um, you know, generally, they, they do the same thing, and so if y'all have any questions, just obviously jump in, hopefully.
Steve, you want to answer that?
I wasn't aware that we could set a weight limit on a county road.
Well, we, we've, we've found, there's a statute that, that allows the, um, counties to, to kind of regulate the, I guess they can vary the weight some, and under this permitting statute, you can, you can set a weight um, if you deem the, the, I guess, the set weight on the road to pose a hazard to the road. Um, so for example, the Mississippi Supreme Court has upheld, under this permitting procedure, um, a weight of thirty thousand pounds on county roads.
That's basically an unloaded dump truck.
Yeah, well, why, why could you have that? I mean, they can't travel, they can't haul their goods.
Well, on certain roads.
I know, but I mean, you get in certain areas, you gotta let them get out. I don't care if.
Well, that's true.
Sixty thousand, eighty thousand, they gotta get out.
And that is true, and, and the way that counties have addressed that and certain agricultural loads and, um, for example, um, waste management, they've, they've allowed certain limited exemptions in their ordinances. And, and for example, if you can't get to a road where you have your load, the exemption will allow you to make a, a, a straight-through pass down that road.
How do those counties enforce that weight limit?
This is, we, we've, we've talked with Craig about this yesterday, and we've looked at this, and we haven't nailed that down yet. Um, we talked to, uh, Madison County yesterday, and, and now we haven't, we don't have a county yet that we're aware of that actually uses scales.
Yeah.
Um, but according to Madison County yesterday, and, and she's going to confer with her county engineer, they have a method that they can, that they can, um, determine weight wi- without a scale. And so that is something that, that will work with Craig and kind of, and nail that down. Certainly, I guess it's the key aspect of these ordinances. Um, uh, but under these ordinances, there's, there's fines for first, second, and third offenses. Some even require, uh, or not require, but offer the possibility of jail time. So, uh, they do vary widely. Now, Adams County, theirs goes down to eight thousand pounds. Um, so, um, which is certainly, certainly low.
My welding truck weighs eight thousand pounds. That's ridiculous.
The way that Madison County has addressed it, from what we can tell from their ordinances, and, and in talking with their attorney yesterday, they anticipate some tinkering with that ordinance in the near future, but the way their ordinance reads is so long, if you exceed the, you, you have to have a permit to exceed a weight as established by the Board. The ordinance doesn't list a weight, and so I'm not sure if they're doing that on a case-by-case basis, a road-by-road basis, or how they may be approaching that, but, um, I think that does leave some, uh, uncertainty in the ordinance. Uh, all of the rest of them that we find do have specific delineated weights. Um, for example, I think it's Emmett County allows you, um, uh, sorry, Lee County allows you up to eighty thousand pounds so long as you meet and confer with the county road manager and you follow a specifically delineated route. Um, that's an option. Um, but, but the weights vary from eight to eighty, with, with some counties regulating, um, per axle. Some counties regulating, um, gross weight for the entire vehicle. Um, you know, obviously, some counties will charge for the permit, some don't. Some will allow a permit to be issued for one year. Some go on a job-by-job basis. Um, there's also provisions in some of these ordinances that allows either the road manager or the Board to, to shut down hauling if, if they're damaging roads.
Okay, what if you got a haul route, and you tear up the haul route?
Well, under these ordinances.
You were given that haul route, and this is route you're going to use and tear it up.
Under these ordinances, there's, the, the operator or driver's still liable for the damage to the road.
What, who, how do you determine that, though? Because when I say that, you, first you got to determine what shape the road was and start with. You, and some of these old rural roads that we have, you have no idea what the base is to start with to judge, to vary. You can go in there and say, this road should have held up or shouldn't have held up. So many of the roads in our county were taken by prescription back in the day, and they were what they are. Back then is what they are today, only the difference is they got some asphalt on them. So it's kind of hard to, to go in and say, you know, sure, you may have torn it up, but, I mean, that's, that's a tough call to, to say that.
Jerry, can I jump in?
Yeah.
What comes to mind, uh, what your question raises in my mind is that there's two parts to this thing. One is the regulation itself, which establishes what kind of truck are we talking about? How much weight, if that's the direction we want to go, are we talking about? That, that's part of the equation. The second part of the equation is, how do you enforce it?
Yeah.
Right? We can talk all day long about we're going to set haul routes, we're going to stay on them. But the enforcement side is the really tricky part of this. Once you start down the path of issuing tickets or citations, and you start having court hearings over conformity with the regulation, at some point, the county is going to have to be able to say, this is precisely what we told them ahead of time, that they should not do, and this is how they violated it. That's our burden to show that, and if they establish there really was no set definable regulation that I broke, and you can't prove it, we may find ourselves with a regulation that can't force.
It's kind of like nuisance properties. We move them up, and then.
Yep. You're right.
But I mean, really, once we do our part, then that's it.
What we've discovered over time, I think, is that we set a regulation, even if it's not precisely defined as we'd like it to be. Some flexibility in there, and from a practical standpoint, it really comes down to whether or not the hauler is wanting to make it a fight that he takes all the way to the ultimate Supreme Court rule or ruling that determines whether or not our ordinance is enforceable or not.
Yeah.
In other words, we, we may never have to get to the point where we learn as a matter of record that we have an unenforceable ordinance. You got six different counties that do it, six different ways.
Yeah.
And then, and then you have all the cities that have their own variations of it.
Of course, they've, they've got so much more, literally, the, the cities are going to have so much more ability to regulate. I told y'all, heard me tell other constituents, the city's home rule statute is, you can do it unless we tell you you can't.
Oh, yeah, they can, they don't have a weight, they don't even have to consider a weight. They just say, no trucks.
Counties, we get, you can't do it unless we tell you you can. Everything's backwards for us, so.
I'm curious, where did we, I didn't know we were having somebody look up. How'd y'all get involved in looking into this?
I, I asked, I asked Trey to help us with this because of the vast amount of variation that there is in the regulation, and we have, it's no secret, we have been threatened with suit over how we are regulating currently. It's a litigation matter.
We don't have any way to enforce it. We really haven't. It's kind of, and, and if it's, it's going to be a lot, just like this nuisance properties. You can find a violation, you send it up to, to the court. You know, I can see where they would, they could have a lot of discrepancies in their thoughts of, of, of fine.
That's right, and here's.
I mean, it's cool, boss.
We, we know we've got to get on top of this. Uh, and so why I really needed these guys to get involved is to make sure that once we make a decision on how we want to go forward, we need to, we need to be able to have some level of confidence that it's going to be enforceable.
I just can't see some of these rural roads that most of the three of us have. You can't help it to me, I'm Daniel, but, uh, yours is a different situation, because it's in more, uh, residential type area. But these rural roads we have, the Pickering Ridge, Enix Road, and, I mean, how you going to really, I mean, things just like, because these trailer trucks have weight or long, when, and logging, when they make the turns, that's where they, they're at, the shoulders, and part of it's because the roads are narrow. And we can't help that. That's what they are. So, I mean, to tell a guy, you tore the road up. Well, the road's so narrow, I'm trying to stay on, in my lane, I can't help it. You know, I mean, I, I got a big truck. I know how, creeping down those roads, you have to be careful when you're trying to make turns. It's hard to, to protect that shoulder when you're getting a car and another truck. So, I mean, it's, it's, that's a tough.
It is.
A real tough, to say you tore the road. Simplest way to me would be, some way we had to make them have a, a bond to cover a said road. I mean.
That, that is another aspect of this, of this statute. It does allow for bonds in an amount, uh, to be determined in discretion of the Board.
Yeah.
So you would have the authority to, to determine the value of that road and potential damage posed by those operations, and, and order the amount of that bond accordingly. One.
And another thing, uh, you careful of, you got a lot of small, uh, think about logging guys. You got, they're real small, family, strictly family. I, I mean, father, two sons, and a guy they hire, that's it. And they, they hire out their trucks, so they don't have one, so they hire two guys to haul for them. I mean, it, you know, you don't want to get it to where you're taking it out, where only the big guys can make a living. And so that, that's another thought I have there. I think about them, these guys are looking proud to see them working. You know, they're, they're working, working hard to make a living, but they're a little small, two sons and a dad situation.
Well, what we want to do is to let you guys know, this is what we're finding, this is what other counties are doing and how they're doing it. Uh, express a little bit of our, um, frustration over the, uh, the fact that we can't really draw a theme on a, on a consistent approach that seems to work. Each county's basically just figured it out, figured out what apparently works best for them in their county, and they're not worried about what everybody else is doing, or literally, apparently, whether or not it's even enforceable. Got some things that I'm reading.
What's some of the counties, can you, can you tell us that, some of the counties that we talked to?
We talked to DeSoto, Madison, Lee, uh, Clay, Emmett, Adams. We talked to DeSoto, Madison, Lee, Clay, Mid, Adams. I talked to Lauderdale, they're going through the same thing that y'all are right now, and don't have anything on paper, but they're formulating that now. And, and several other counties that did not have an ordinance.
How do they enforce it?
Did you hear what you said? About fourteen? You know, what was that, the number I heard yesterday? Fourteen different counties that were contacted that had no ordinance of any kind?
Right, right.
Okay, so your question about it, or whatever, apparently they don't enforce it.
And they're worth-
Whatever they're doing, they're running the block.
Well-
Not anymore. And it may have been, it may have been Lee County, one county said, yes, we have this ordinance, but according to the board attorney, he said he didn't know how much it was actually enforced.
You know, you can't single out one or the other, biggest thing you got is dirt, dirt in the loggers, but, you know, I'd say mostly at a dirt pit wherever it enters the road, that's where you, and the, the short route usually they make from a, on a rural road to a major road, that's, that's probably because it's just constant, you're talking about hundreds of trucks sometimes.
Another issue for us is, you know, we, there's, there's about six counties that are roughly the same size, population-wise, and, you know, we, we pretty much have consistent conversations, board attorneys talk to each other about what they're, what they're doing, or we face a lot of the common issues. But in, in reality, even the big guys, like your DeSotos, like your Harris's, we don't all have the same issue.
Right.
There's virtually no logging in DeSota County. So if you're gonna go and ask them about y'all enforcing all operations on logging, I really need to know what DeSota's doing. So, I mean, so, you know, I need to be talking to Lawrence County, the hinterlands of Wayne County, something like that, what y'all doing. What we find is that those are, are not densely populated areas. We, we are very unique in Franklin County in that we have dense areas of population not too far away from areas where there is significant logging.
And mining, yeah. Seems like they're popping up everywhere.
They flash.
Grenada, did y'all, did you call Grenada County?
Um, I don't think that we did.
They, they got a big mill up there, I was just curious, they, they have a good bit of timber that come into that, to that family mill, I can't remember the name of the mill up there, but you might put them on your list just to see if they're doing anything.
So what I would suggest, we, we need to keep moving this thing, moving this thing, and not let it just kind of drift on. We now have a significant base of information, start pulling together ideas that y'all can keep passionate. My proposal would be, let us take, we're, we're reporting to you some of what we're finding, give you some ideas about what we know at this stage, we'll continue to make contacts, but Kyle and I will sit down, Kyle, Frank and I will sit down, we'll, what we, what we would suggest at this point, maybe by fifteen, come back and have you guys the draft form of some potential regulations that you could look at with some options. If you give us to the fifteen, we can probably get a-
Second, you have to the second to get it together. Work the weekend.
It must be close to that.
You know what that's gonna cost us, boss?
Sixteen, thank you.
All right. Look, Kyle, thank you very much for diving in that, Craig, very much. That's all I needed information. Anything else, Mr. Slay?
Yeah, if I may, we've got our, we've got our right wing guys here with us again today.
Do we always get those guys?
Always, every meeting has turned out to be, we're moving forward.
Why don't we just pencil them in on every agenda?
Yeah.
And if they don't show up, they just don't-
It's a business, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right, so.
Make a motion, we add to the agenda.
All right, so motion by Mr. Morrow to add it to the agenda, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. Good morning and welcome again.
You too.
You got copies or something, guys?
I do.
This is gonna be gunner.
Man, what kinda shoes do you have on? Your waders? Did you bring your waders in here?
You know, you never know.
Sling it in there, there you go. I understand.
Thank you, sir.
Raymond's got a pair of boots like those, I've seen him wear them. They may be yours, I think.
I gotta report that one.
Check on. Swap in them white Nikes and let him go with them, you take them waders.
Hey, I gotta read something. This is unbelievable.
Give it to me.
Now, this might not even be this year's reading, but it's today's, March the twenty-ninth. Stop trying to work things out. I wish I'd read this earlier.
Why don't you get to the beginning of the meat?
No, I wish I'd read that, except limitations of living one day at a time. I needed that yesterday and today.
All right, good morning. Tell us what you got.
Thank you so much. We've got a couple of establishments of just compensation for some properties on, on Gunter Road. We've got four tracks that we are working on establishment of just compensation today. The first track on the list, parcel oh sixty-three, we have a previous establishment of just compensation that was approved for nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight. We had to add a temporary construction easement, which bumped the compensation up a little bit, so we wanted to reestablish that compensation. So that's not an additional, that's only additional, you know, four hundred dollars there on that parcel. And the rest of these are new valuations.
I said, the damages are just what?
We've got some, we've got some fencing, landscaping, some large trees, and we've got a bridge going across a, a small, like a wooden bridge going across a creek that we're gonna have to pay to cost-
Make a motion to approve.
All right, so motion by Mr. Morrow to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. So approval's made.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I-
In the future, if there's ever an issue with the property owner on public right-of-way that has to do with the road construction project, we're happy to have a staff member on site to take notes, provide those notes to, to Mr. Slay. In, in a situation like Holly Bush that may arise, we're, give us a call, we'd love to be there on site, we know the rules and regulations regarding what you can and can't do on public road right-of-way. We're happy to be there just to take notes and, and watch. So in the future, don't hesitate to give us a call.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate you guys.
I've got, I've got something else, so, so we're well into acquisitions on Gunter Road, and so this is the first of landowner counteroffers that I'm, that I'm bringing to y'all. The process is that the landowner has an opportunity to receive a fair market value offer that I present based on the establishment of just compensation. If they don't think that that fair market value offer is fair, then they are burdened to prove to y'all why it's not fair. So this, I'm bringing two of those to y'all today, and-
Is this a separate item, it being put on the agenda?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
Make a motion there on the agenda.
All right, so motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign.
I'll let Mr. Slay work out the language for the ladies as far as what it's-
This would be consideration of landowner counteroffer in, comma, Gunter Road.
Mr. Slay has the landowner's kind of support for his argument here. I've summarized the argument for y'all in this letter. The FMVO on this one was two thousand six hundred and seven dollars. The landowner counteroffer is requesting an administrative adjustment, which would be by y'all's authority. Y'all are making an administrative adjustment to add this, six hundred and fifty dollars. The total is thirty-two fifty-seven, and there's kind of a two-paragraph summary for you for the support of his argument. Long story short, he counted some small trees that we didn't count in the damages portion.
Were they the same kind of tree? I mean, were they just a bush, weed?
They're six, eight foot tall.
Ornamental tree?
They're, they are landscaping trees. Mm-hmm.
If we say no, Mr. Slay, what is his recourse?
Well, he, he doesn't really have any recourse.
I guess he could sue.
Well, the recourse would be us taking his property by eminent domain under quick-take.
If he didn't wanna take, if he's gonna hold us to six hundred and fifty dollars.
So he's offering you a settlement, as it were, the administrative adjustment part is six fifty. We're probably about three paragraphs into an eminent domain complaint draft by your lawyer to get to six fifty. Yeah.
It's because y'all worded so.
Those are big paragraphs, too.
How many, how many parcels have you got left on Gunter Road to do?
The left parcels, probably, well, we've acquired title already to twenty-five. We've got probably at least that many that are in some stage of getting the deed executed. We don't expect there to be any issues. We've quick-taped one, we've only had to do eminent domain on one so far, and you've got about another twenty-five on top of that. So we're, we're two-thirds of the way through, maybe another third to go.
Any other really challenging your, your values yet, besides this one?
One. I've got another one right after this one. You know, when I'm on site talking to landowners, you know, I never, it's not my job ever to take an opinion of the value, it's his job. So I'm explaining to the landowners what his opinion was. When they bring up the idea of a landowner counteroffer, we talk through the reasonableness of this, and we discuss very specifically that the offer needs to be fair to the individual landowner, but it also needs to be fair to the other taxpayers. You know, they're writing the check, basically. So we walk them through that, you know, very often, especially if they're arguing with the, the land value, it's just not, you know, Jim's got a pretty good opinion of the land value. Most of the landowner counteroffers that are gonna come to you are gonna be-
Look at the damages.
Having to do with damages and, and a difference in understanding of what the, the damage of the property, to the property is, or how much it's gonna cost.
Where I get, really exercise is legal counsel, is, is where they're arguing with us over our determination of fair value on the underlying property. I get exercise about that, because that can, that can creep into it quickly and, and in a major way, impact how you're dealing with the remaining parcels.
Well, that was my thing, man.
Where we're arguing over trees-
Catching a few trees.
I'm, I'm not concerned about that. Six fifty versus paying me sixty-five hundred to go quick-take it, I can't, I cannot make that justified.
I know, the only thing it does, though, is, the next one down, they talk, the next one down the road goes, well, I'm gonna count my trees.
If y'all would've, you said these trees were brought to your attention after that. If you would've had this information when you were doing the appraisal, would you have adjusted it up to six hundred and fifty dollars at that time?
We may or may not have, depending on the, depending on, depending on the, you know, the relationship with the trees to the, to the take area. In this situation, I, we have driven back out there and taken a look at trees, and they were planted trees, so I do think some compensation is warranted.
I think we should make a big note-
And they're landscaping trees.
That we now know that they are landscaping trees, and we may have had-
Right.
Because I, I'm like Jared, even though it may cost six thousand to litigate this, if we just start do, I mean, then every one of your appraisals are gonna be appealed to us.
Mr. Gaines, I would definitely agree with you that we're not gonna write the check for no reason. I think in this instance, there's a reason.
But they're planted trees.
It makes, in, in both of these instances today, my gut says this makes sense. And I'm able to tell landowners when they're saying that they're gonna exercise their right to do a landowner counteroffer, I say, well, that doesn't really, what you're saying there doesn't really make a lot of sense. And a lot of times, I can, I can head them off from a landowner counteroffer by saying that, you know, it's not my, it's not my decision, but that really doesn't make a lot of sense. On this one, you know, maybe, maybe he's being a little picky, but I see where he's coming from.
Okay. You charged sixty-five hundred for an eminent domain?
I didn't wanna go down there. I didn't know that, here we go.
Okay, I was just curious.
We, we don't wanna know.
I was assuming that there would be a fight.
All right, so the board wish to entertain a motion on this?
Do we need to bind them up?
Yeah, we can do both separately, or?
Yeah. The box, you're good, with that being a combined motion to have proposals?
Kabadda.
So again, Mr. Slay's got the supporting documentation that's provided by the landowner. In this case, the supporting documentation is a quote from-
Thank you.
From A-one Kendrick Fence Company. In this instance, the Nippers have received a fair market value offer of three thousand one hundred and eighty. They're requesting an administrative adjustment of a thousand sixty-one sixteen, and that would bring the total counteroffer to four thousand three hundred forty-one sixteen. Sorry for the clerical error there.
Explain that one.
This one is, the, the damages portion of this fair market value offer allowed for seven dollars and fifty cents per foot to replace three hundred feet of fencing. The quote as provided by the landowner to support his administrative adjustment request details two gates that were not detailed in the quote for the fence. In this instance, there is sort of an emotional attachment to the fence by the landowner.
Motion to approve.
All right, so motion approved by Mr. Morrow.
I don't wanna hear that. I don't wanna hear what you say.
Second by Mr. Gaines.
We were-
I don't really wanna get into the emotional attachment.
We, we were able to talk through the fact that there's no way to pay for the emotional attachment.
Emotional attachment to a fence.
But the fence-
It was built by his father about fifty years ago by hand.
But there was, there is a fence there now, we're tearing it down, and we left out the value of, and I know on these decorative fences, the gates are the most expensive.
Yes, sir.
Well, the gates, yeah, I see that, yeah.
We did not detail, we did not detail the gate.
Are they ornamental gates?
Uh, it's, I mean, it's, it's very handmade, yes.
The gates, well, I understand.
Their dad welded the gates together by hand and, you know, very detailed.
All right, any further discussion?
Jared don't know anybody around there.
He welded, he welded mine, probably shit was by hand.
Greg's got him out in the back of the truck.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign. So your item's passed. Thank you.
I want that address, I wanna go look at these gates.
Come ride with, be glad to take you on some landowner fair market value offer meetings with-
Yeah, I know.
We're about to enforce this.
Hey, how you coming on the one with the swamp?
Oh, we have-
Bunny, the old bunny problem.
Yeah, we met with the landowner, and we have a good, kinda rough idea of how to tie the driveway in, and-
But he's not, I'm saying, he's not still holding you to the, the value of that-
We have not gotten to that point in the conversation yet.
Okay.
We are at, we are at the point where the engineer's designing his tie-in to the road, based on his preference. Once that's done, then Jim will look at it again.
Okay.
But once that's done, I'm gonna call you and then make an offer.
We gotta put some value of that, what that's for.
Correct. We needed to establish the plan for how to tie him back in, and, and that, that affects the-
I just wanna know, because I know who he is, he's, I'll come, stop, drop by and see me, 'cause I kinda wanna know where we're at.
I asked him to give us the opportunity to prepare everything before we continue the discussion.
He's just like, poppy him one day, and I just wanted to know.
Yeah, it would be appropriate for him to hold off and hear from us before we continue the conversation.
I will say, some of the ones I thought that had problems with have settled and all fine.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Guys, Mr. Slay, I hate to even ask the question, do you have anything else? All right.
Well-
Well, possibly.
To be-
To be determined later.
Determined later.
All right. Ms. Oster, good morning.
Good morning. The first thing I have this morning is authority from my current EOC director to attend the Mississippi Preparedness Summit, May seventh through tenth, at the Imperial Palace in Biloxi.
All right. Motion by Mr. Morrow to approve, second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. Item B.
Next item is authority to reimburse Teresa Hudson for mileage to Jefferson Davis County Circuit Court in Prentice.
Wow.
She was, she had a subpoena there, and she didn't have a police vehicle to take a shirt.
They're not supposed to pay our mileage on a subpoena like that?
I don't know.
Did she borrow your truck?
Yeah, charged mileage.
She can use my county vehicle.
She was using her vehicle.
I don't have one.
No, he said on a subpoena.
On a subpoena? On a subpoena, people just doing the subpoena and-
Who issued it? Well, it's her job, she's assigned to the Fusion Center, so-
Oh, she's not subpoenaed, it's just, uh-
Oh, in her physical passage, she's due by Circuit Court in Jefferson Davis.
All right, okay, all right.
There won't be any mileage.
It's gum and gum, I'm a fan.
All right, Board of Winters wish to entertain a motion?
Sure, sir.
So motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like signs. Item B passes. Item C.
Dylan Bancor, Adult Detention Officer, been chosen by the governor to serve as a young adult member on the Mississippi Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee, and he is going to attend a meeting, March the 27th through the 29th, in Biloxi. This will be to pay any travel related expenses.
Let the state pay for it.
I'm just kidding. How's he chosen? How's he, he's just, I mean, how's he picked?
He was chosen by the governor.
All right, so motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the like sign. Item D, Ms. Oster.
Review of our agendas for April 2nd, if y'all have any questions.
Can you turn that red light on, 'cause I'm a little embarrassed to ask this question? Show most stupidity, I'm afraid.
When did we open up the bids for Holly Bush Road? It was open Tuesday, we hadn't awarded them. I think it was Tuesday, wasn't it?
I never heard us talk about monies, you know, for who the bidders were and how much they all were for. I don't remember us doing it in public, I mean, in the public meeting.
They haven't, they haven't been awarded yet, really.
They just opened them to look at them, to take them, to look at them. They haven't been brought to us.
Okay.
They're just doing the calculations.
I wonder if they sleep or something during that particular part of the meeting.
No, they have not been brought to us.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious.
Anything else on agenda wise? All right, additional business, Ms. Oster?
I do have one item to add, I need to add authority to reimburse $350 to Paul Meeks for an erroneous deposit on the reservoir community center and authority to issue that check.
Motion to put it on the agenda.
All right, so motion to put it on the agenda by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison,